And good afternoon and welcome to the Cumberland County Board of Agenda Setting Conference for September the 12th, 2024. I will call the meeting to order and I guess I'm setting to do the invocations so we can all stay.
Oh, Jesus. Thank you.
Dear heavenly Father, we come today just saying thank you. Thank you, Father, for this wonderful, beautiful day that you've given us. Thank you for all of those that are assembled here in this room. Father, we ask you everything be done decent and in order, just as you commanded in your word. Father, we ask you to bless everybody that's in this room. Give them roll mercy as they leave from here. We ask this in your son's Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
If we can do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I said that for the last few years, but anyway, well, we announced it. So before we get to the approval of the agenda, I do want to do, say thank you and his Commissioner, Net Counselors Church, but thank you to Friendship Baptist this week for hosting us and allowing us to use their facilities for our homeless community that we did the homeless center. And they allowed us to be there. They were gracious hosts. And so I just publicly want to say thank you to Friendship Baptist and the pastor. And I would tell the pastor that his staff did an excellent job making sure we were at home and that they took care of us in every way. That's what community is all about and we thank them for that. Before we get to the approval of the agenda, I would like to add, there's one closed session item and a second closed session item for real estate. And then I would ask the manager, are there any changes to the agenda beyond that?
No, Chairman Adams, there are no changes to the agenda.
Look for approval.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor? That is unanimous.
We've got a little feedback on the microphones.
Okay, she's got that taken care of. Could be I'm just loud. That could be. I'll move it a little. That will take us to our county health rankings, the update and preliminary results. I will call on the manager, Dr. Green, and I will, come on up, Dr. Green, and thank Commissioner Jones for attending that preliminary meeting over at the Health Department. Mr. Manager.
Dr. Green will go over the most recent health ranking update and provide any answering questions you may have.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So today I'm before you to provide an update on our county health rankings as well as the preliminary results of our community health needs assessment. And let me echo Commissioner Adams' thanks. We had our preliminary priority setting session and both Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Adams were present. So we appreciate you and our staffer in the community. We're appreciative that you were present and we'll talk about that at the end. So we do a community health assessment every three to five years in collaboration with Cape Fear Valley Health System. So we are on our cycle to do that again. So we started our data collection back in the spring. We do two sections of data collection. We do secondary data collection. That includes reviewing data that already exists. So we look at our county health rankings, some of our national, state and local data sets. And then we also collect our own data and we do some primary data collection and that happens in the form of a community survey. We had over 1,200 respondents in Cumberland County that responded to that survey. And then we also do four additional focus groups and we'll talk through that. So and then we have a stakeholder meeting to take that data and to prioritize that into things that we're going to work on for the next few years. So I'm here before you today to kind of give an overview of what the results of the health assessment is. So as I mentioned, we do, we take individual county data measures. We compare those against benchmarks that already exist. So if we are, for example, if we're talking about obesity, we compare our obesity rates in Cumberland County to our state and national level data sets. We consider it to be a high need if we're more than 5% worse than the state or national level. We consider it to be a medium need if we're on par and then we consider it to be a low need if we're less than 5% off from where the state or national ranking is. So we take all of that in context for our local data. Commissioners will be familiar with this. We track two different types of metrics. Our health outcomes, so these are things that happen down the line. They're called lagging indicators. These are things like length of life and your quality of life. So how long did you live? At what age did you pass away? And then how was the quality of your life looking at overall physical health and mental health? And then we look at leading indicators. So those are things that are happening relatively right now. These are our health behaviors. Do you have access to clinical care, your physical environment, air quality, water quality, your socioeconomic environment? So things like food insecurity, poverty, employment. So we take these two factors and you all be familiar because we track these two things in terms of our county health rankings. So a few years ago and when I was before you last year, I mentioned this, we no longer rank counties zero to 100. We used to do, is Cumberland County, what number are we in terms of the health outcomes and then what number are we in terms of our health factors? The Robert Wood Johnson Foundation, who puts together these rankings, have shifted away from that measure. Instead, we look at it sort of in a gradient and we really think about where are we trending and how can we get better. So Cumberland County, this is a map of North Carolina. The darker colors are, this is for our health outcomes. So this is again length of life and that quality of life. The darker green colors are the healthiest counties in the state and the yellow or lighter colors are the least healthy. So we are still falling behind our national and state averages, but the good news here is if you compare this chart to last year, we are getting better. We are trending and more towards this dark green color in terms of our health outcomes. So we can expect that this is not, these numbers aren't going to improve dramatically year to year. Again, we're looking at trends over time. The health outcomes are our health, our length of life, which takes a long time to make improvements on. The next one is our health factors. So again, these are things that are happening now, overweight, obesity, smoking, income level, poverty. Those are our health factors. We are getting better in this area. Again, the color schemes are, the colors are different, but the darker color means that we are more healthier. We're getting better. Or I'm sorry, the darker colors are the healthiest counties and then the purple colors or the pink colors are in the least healthy. So we are still falling behind our national and state averages, but we are getting better. We're much closer to that national average than we were last year in terms of our health factors. So still work to be done, but improvements. So let's get to the results of our primary data collection. We did, we asked on our survey, what are the most important health problems that affect the community? So the top three were mental health, alcohol and drug addiction, and then being overweight or obesity were the top three health priorities that the community members that did the survey, those were the things that they prioritized. Then we asked about, if you are not seeking health care, why are you not seeking health care when you need it? So what's that most important reason for why you didn't get health care when you, when you needed it? And the majority of participants said it's because it's too costly, it's too expensive, or they can't pay for it. The second and third reasons were about not having health insurance and then the wait time was too long to get in to see a provider. So those give you a kind of a context for what are the barriers to care in our community. Then we asked about our socioeconomic factors. So we know that health is not just about do you have health insurance and do you have a provider? It is about what we call social determinants of health, the things where you live, work, play, pray, that impact your ability to access those services. So it won't be a surprise to you, the top three things that the community identified were housing or homelessness, poverty, and then the availability to access a doctor's office. So those were the top three priorities. And then other things that people noted, which we're familiar with in public health, childcare, transportation, discrimination, access to healthy foods. So then we did also a series of focus groups. We know that some communities don't, in particular, don't complete surveys or they're less likely to complete a survey. So we did four focus groups, one with our Fayetteville State students, our migrant farm workers, and many thanks to Lisa Childers and her team for helping us make that connection. And Cape Fear Valley surveyed their, we did a focus group with their employees and then our military veterans. So more than 20 community members participated in these small focus groups and some common themes across the focus groups are about healthcare access and quality. So again, this echoes and relates back to our hard data, the high cost of healthcare, the wait time, lack of understanding how to navigate the healthcare system, transportation, were all identified as common themes in our survey or in the focus groups. So let's put it back all together. So if you look at this chart, it's a little bit busy, but we took the priorities that came out of the secondary data, the community survey, and then each of the four focus groups, and we put a check mark if that theme or that data aligned with a priority area that you see on your left-hand side of your screen. So if we look at the data, the four things that came out of this were behavioral health and mental health, employment and income, healthcare access and quality, and then physical health. So things like chronic disease, cancer, obesity. Those were the things that were common most often across the four. So then last week, as mentioned, we did a key stakeholder meeting to take all of this. We reviewed, we did a much longer data presentation for our stakeholders and we shared with them this data to review it and then they did, we put them to work. They did some prioritizing. They got, they did some voting about, several rounds of voting about how to prioritize those results. And these are the three things that came out of the priorities. So mental health, behavioral health, and then we added on substance abuse because, or substance use because we know mental health and behavioral health along with substance use can be or might be linked. And then physical health, so again, chronic disease, obesity, smoking, cancer, and then mental, maternal health and infant health. Those three things were the top priorities that the stakeholders selected. So next, and then, so our next steps. So in August, we presented the preliminary findings to our Board of Health. Our Board of Health members are requesting public comment during their October meeting. So invite the public to join that meeting and provide public comment. We also have a link to the data presentation on our website. The community can go and look at that and then provide feedback to us at our Board of Health meeting in October. We'll take that feedback, incorporate that in, send it back out to our stakeholders. We'll be drafting that report. We have to turn it in by November, the draft by November the 15th. We'll share that, those priorities back out and then we'll incorporate that into a final report that will be prepared in December and then submitted for final approval to our accrediting bodies by March 2025. So again, I want to say thank you to all of the community partners that worked really hard on that and our partners at Cape Fear who really helped us to lift the work. And so I'll pause there to see what questions you have.
Commissioner Fairclough.
Thank you. Dr. Green, we, every time anybody does any surveys of population, age, things of that nature, we always rank as probably the youngest county in the state.
Yes.
And how can, how can we be the youngest county in the state and be in such poor health? Is our military population not included in our health assessment?
They do. And so they complete our health assessment. So we know that our service members, you know, live in our community too. So we have our veterans and our military members also complete the survey too. And then Fort Bragg also does their own community health assessment. They're on a little bit different cycle than we are.
Are they not part of us?
They are, but they also, they're an accredited health department too. So they have to also do a community health assessment. And we share in our processes together, but they're on, they have their own accrediting body that requires a health assessment as well.
I'm not sure I understand the answer there. Okay, if we're looking at the health of Cumberland County, are these young people at Fort Bragg included in our health assessment?
Yes. So they can, yes, they can take the survey as well.
Can, can we drill down and figure out what demographic is bringing us down so low since we got this large population that's so high?
Let me, let me, let me go this way and I think she can give it to you. When you look at what they ask for, it's not just your health. They're asking whether there are some parks around, how much walking trails you have. There are some things in that whole, and I think Dr. Green can probably tell you, Commissioner Keevan, I have talked about this all the time. There are some things, it's not just your health and whether you're healthy or not, it's whether you've got green space, whether you've got a walking trail, right, Dr. Green, whether you've got access to, how many doctors you've got in your community. So all of those things figured into that whole factor at the end of the day. It's just not, are you a healthy individual? So we can be healthy individually, but if you don't do all those other metrics, I'll leave it to Dr. Green. She's the expert on that.
You said it. So this section in gray is about our individual behavior. So diet, exercise, sexual health, substance use. That's really it for our individual behaviors that go into those health factors. All of the other metrics are really about community level things. So are people employed? Do we have grocery stores that are accessible? Do we have good transportation? How many people are housed? All of these, so there are many, many more metrics that contribute to our rankings, more than just sort of these individual health behaviors. How many people have a doctor to go to? So you said it, Commissioner Adams, I don't know that I could add much to that.
That is your question, Commissioner Fairclough.
Yeah, I got one follow-up.
Go ahead.
Okay, so since the, what was it?
Robert Wood Johnson Foundation.
Since they're doing a little different than they have in the past, are we getting better or getting worse?
So we're getting better.
Yeah, we are getting better.
We're getting better. We are not getting better for every metric. So you know, there's a long list of these. So we're getting better for some of them. So for example, adult obesity and smoking, we're making improvements, but there are still others that are pretty high, sexual health. Our number, our STD rates still remain high. So for some metrics, we are improving, but overall, you know, we're getting better, we're creeping up a little bit year over year. Our challenge is, so is everybody else. Everybody, everybody's getting a little better, which is what we want. Yes. So we, it is, still there's some comparison there, but we want to make sure that our community is trending forward.
Commissioner Kee.
Yeah, thanks, Marshall. Those are questions that we've been talking about. This group is, are they out of light in Minnesota or Wisconsin?
Wisconsin, yes.
Wisconsin, okay. So they don't know anything about our community. And a good example would be that you brought up the military. If they look at, there's a doctor to patient ratio, where the highest in the entire state is Durham, because they got all the doctors at Duke University that they call and they, in a, they put it to their population. We've got all these doctors at Womack where military folks go to, go to get their service, but they're not really counted as doctors for us. So there's a lot of things that make our community unique. And so there is some things that kind of give us the best. I was glad to see that AIDS in teen pregnancy weren't a highlight because that seems to be one that has been on there. The trend has been that people are getting healthier.
Yes.
But throughout, but we're still kind of in the same spot, getting a little bit better, but everybody else is getting better too.
Yes, that's right. That's accurate.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the emperor has no clothes question here. Is, it seems to me that there's a consistent theme throughout this. And if you bring up that map right there, the map that you're on, it shows that poverty, poverty matters.
Poverty matters.
When you start talking about the community survey, when you take out mental health and alcoholism, the next three are directly resulted from bad diet, poverty, poor choices on food, choices.
Access.
Well, access, you know, even to that. So, and that was, I'm going into my whole farmer's market.
We know where you're at.
But it's education. Just paying people for food doesn't mean they'll eat healthy food.
Right.
And everybody knows that, that individuals in poverty have a lower life expectancy.
Yes.
Than people who are more affluent or middle class that, that don't rely on government subsidy. So the consistent thing through, that I've seen through this is we are, we have poverty in our community, as do many of the other counties south of us. They're some of the highest poverty areas in the state, whereas the more affluent are in the blue.
That's correct.
And in our pain. So the, again, the emperor has no clothes is education, opportunity increases health.
And that's why we can't just focus on these individual health level behaviors. We try to come up with strategies and solutions, as you noted, around food insecurity that really address the whole person because if you, even if I gave you the money, you still have to have access to a grocery store, you still have to have transportation, you still have to have the infrastructure and community.
Make the right decisions.
Right.
You have to have the will to make the right decisions too.
Right, and to educate.
Not to take anything away from Little Debbie, who I liked, you know, growing up and her snacks, but that's not healthy eating and it does get to some, if it's convenient. One of the statistics I, I used to share with my other presentation was, I think people will be stunned at the amount of groceries that are bought at dollar stores and convenience stores as opposed to supermarkets and fresh fruits. So, you know, I know, I know you have to get community feedback, but, but these are 20-year-old problems. We, we know what the problems are.
Yes.
The problems are unhealthy living and unhealthy choices in our community. That's a direct result of poverty in the community. I don't, I don't know how you cannot see that.
We're, I think you hit it. The map is really clear. If you, we are a tier one county and so if the counties that tend to do better are the counties that have a higher level of income. And so we're trying to, if we look at our priorities, these are really things that cut across. You could, these things, even the ones that we didn't select are things that link back together. And so we want to make sure we're addressing all parts of it, the education part. Do I have access? Do I have food? All of these things link back. So even if we didn't pick food insecurity, that impacts your, your physical health and your chronic disease. Whether or not you have the doctors, access to a doctor's office impacts your behavioral, mental health. So all of these things are really, we select priorities, but we also know that all of these things are really interrelated.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Dr. Green.
Thank you.
All right. And I'd ask any Commissioners, if they have any further questions or they want some input, just let, email Dr. Green your input on those questions like what Marshall had.
Yes.
With that, thank you so very much. The next presentation is from Southlight Healthcare. I asked to put that on and we've got Ms. Kelly Ross, who's the Director of Operations, and Adam Hartso, who is the Chief Executive Office of Southlight. Southlight is a provider here in the community. Alliance Health contracted with Southlight to bring them here to Cumberland County. They came to my office because they wanted to introduce themselves to the community, their mental health and substance use treatment. They'll tell you all about what they do, but it's a path to recovery. They've been doing this for more than 50 years. They've helped probably over 8,000, you know, I got this stuff.
You got it.
8,000 individuals and families each year. They do more than 700 plus individuals receiving opioid treatment each day. So I'm not going to steal your thunder, but thank you so very much. I think it's important for our citizens as well as we all. I would tell you, y'all close your ears so y'all don't go back and tell. But we had a conversation with Alliance the other day. Is you send providers to our community and we don't know it. It doesn't help them and it doesn't help this community if nobody knows they exist. So I asked them to come and give us a quick, short presentation. They're on Ramsey Street, right above Grove Street and so right behind, before you get to the Bojangles.
The New Bojangles, that's our.
So I don't know if eating boobberries or not, but anyway, don't get fat off those boobberries and mess up our healthcare outcome. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We appreciate it. Thank you, everyone. And it's, it's great to follow. Dr. Green, we couldn't have gotten a better setup than to see some of the results of your surveys and the fact that, you know, the, of the three top priorities, number one and number two are issues that we addressed, which is behavioral health. So let me tell you a little bit about Southlight. We have been doing this work for more than 50 years. We, as, as the Commissioner referenced, we, we serve about 8,000 people a year currently. We have historically been based in the Wake County area, but have branched out to several other counties and were asked to come.
Pull that mic up just a little bit to make sure we got, we're streaming this.
Yep. And we were asked to come to Cumberland County to help meet a need. So let me tell you a few things that make us unique and different that may be providers that you've worked with in the past or that you're aware of. One, we're a nonprofit, okay? And we've been a nonprofit. We were founded in 1970 by a group of volunteers who wanted to address substance use issues in, in our communities. And so, and so, you know, we're not putting money first, all right? We, we, currently about 60% of the folks we serve are on Medicaid. Another 15% have no insurance of any kind at all, but about 20, 25% have other forms of insurance. So our main focus is to provide access and care to folks, okay? Another thing that makes us unique, as the Commissioner referenced, is while we serve all forms of substance use, we are currently the largest opioid provider in the state. Our number as of Monday of this week, Commissioner, is 824 people coming in on a daily basis just for the opioid epidemic.
What, you say daily basis?
On a daily basis.
800?
824.
In this county or throughout?
No, throughout our, our area. Most of those are in the Triangle area, okay? And, and then the other thing that makes us really, really unique is that we are both a substance use and mental health provider. What you'll find frequently is a substance use provider that has a mental health counselor or a mental health provider that has a substance use counselor. We actually provide a full range of services, both in the mental health and substance use treatment area. So that makes us very unique because as, because it would probably not surprise many of you to find out that those are co-occurring situations. About 80% of people that have substance use also have mental health and vice versa. So about 80% of the folks that come to Southlight actually experience both, both behavioral health and substance use. So with that, I'm going to introduce Kelly, who's going to tell you a little bit about where we are in our project here in Fayetteville, how we're launching and what we're going to be launching with, the services we're going to be launching with. And one thing I want to say about Kelly is Kelly's been working with Southlight for many, many years. She's been commuting from Cumberland County up to Wake County, Johnson County area, but she lives here. And so we were really excited when we got this opportunity to be able to ask one of our best leaders in our organization to, to help launch and open this office for us. So go ahead, Kelly.
Thank you. So as the Commissioner said, our current office is located on Ramsey Street and we currently offer community-based services. So we are working with those individuals that have housing insecurity, that have pervasive mental health and co-occurring substance use disorder. We have, we have an acting, we have a community support team, and we have peer, which is something unique that we do exceptionally well. We have one of the largest peer groups that is out working in the field. And we are about to launch an office-based opioid treatment program here in Cumberland County to help serve those individuals. One of the beautiful things about Southlight is because we are a nonprofit, one of the things that Dr. Green referenced in her presentation is that people don't have access to quality care. Because we're a nonprofit, we bring to Cumberland County that access. We will not turn people away for their inability to pay. I'm a member of this community, so when it was brought to us that this was an opportunity, I couldn't wait to come here. I live here with all of you, so I know what it's like to have pop-up facilities and people get all excited and then the next day they're no longer there and then where do we go for services? So that's not the case here. One of the things that makes us so uniquely different from other places is that anyone who comes to us is that anyone who comes to us gets treated with dignity and respect. And we have the ability to link all of those resources. So we can look for those educational programs that help with food and nutrition. We can look for ways to get them linked to Medicaid if they're not already receiving that insurance. We can look for ways to get them approved for disability if they have that existing concern and have not been able to get that. We have a whole team. Our Wake County office has 27 service lines. Our Cumberland County office to start with will have six, and we hope to build on that.
Are there any questions for us about Southlight or anything that we do?
Commissioner Stewart.
I don't have any questions, but kudos to you. I am so happy to hear about another opportunity for our, um, citizens to have service, accessible service is everything. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. We appreciate that. Um, we are literally just opening our doors, just getting our signs up, just getting our staff hired. Um, but in the near future, we'll have a, we'll have a little event and invite you all out to our new building. So.
When, when are you, when?
So we have already actually started services. So when, when Kelly says community-based services, what that means is rather than people having to come into an office, these are teams of people that go out into the community.
So awesome.
Right? Uh, and we've got two teams right now. One is called CST and one is called ACTA. I won't, you know, go with all the acronyms with you, but they're both mental health services. So these are folks whose primary diagnosis is, you know, schizophrenia, severe depression, things like that. And we go out and find them. And wherever they're in the community, we've already met with the library and, you know, the hospitals and the ERs and lots of the EMS and, right, the police. We're already, we're already starting those relationships. And we go out and we find those people and we start treatment in, in the field, in wherever they are. Um, and then, um, and so that's, that's kind of where we're starting because that's what the greatest need was in this community. That's what, that's what we were asked to come and do first.
Are you nine to five?
I'm sorry?
Nine to five, Monday through Friday?
It's, it's, with community-based service, it's not a nine to five thing.
I, I agree.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, it, we go where, we go when, when we're needed. And we've got teams of people that were, are working all hours of the day.
Awesome. We actually have a 24-hour crisis line. Um, and anyone who calls into our office now can select a button and that will link them directly to me. Um, so they can call anytime, day or night. Um, all of our teams that are currently working in the field have people that specialize in housing, people that specialize in, um, employment opportunities. So those are people that are going into tent cities and different places around town and kind of accessing all of those barriers and trying to bring those barriers down. Um, and we go to them. They don't have to come to us. So that eliminates some of those barriers.
So last question.
Yep.
Um, so I, the, if they call anytime, it links to you. Um, and I know you're, you may or you may not be, you know, taking live calls, but will they talk to a live person?
I actually take the live calls.
You're my twin.
Yeah, that's right. So, and this is what I'll say, is our commitment to this community, okay? One, we're not coming in asking you all to fund us or give us funds at this point in time, okay? We are here because we've been asked to come because there's a need and, and we, uh, we're trying to bring resources to your community. So that's one thing I'll commit to. Second thing is, um, we're not starting with 26 services and making huge promises to y'all. We're going to start with five or six and do them really well. And when we get those figured out and, and operating well, then we'll bring some more. Okay? Um, but our commitment is to, is to be in this community for the long haul. And the things that we offer and the things that we say we're going to do, we're going to follow up on.
Commissioner Keith. Yeah, real quick, um, we've been tracking this opioid crisis for years.
Yep. It's, it's pretty bad.
Well, it doesn't seem like it's getting much better.
Well, there's a little, a little thing called fentanyl. Okay? So if you look at, if you look at, if you look at the statistics, they were actually starting to come down about three or four years ago, uh, right before COVID, actually. They were starting to, they were starting to level off and come down. And then, um, and then fentanyl came into the, into the community. And that was really the game changer. Fentanyl is a nasty, horrible, horrible thing. And it's not just, uh, it's, it's in everything. Okay? So one thing is, in our office up in, in, in Wake County, okay, um, we have a lab and we're testing about 20, 25% of the people who come through every day, um, on, so we can tell you exactly what's on the street in North Carolina today. Okay? And what I can tell you is there are people who swear they've never taken an opioid in their life because all they do is smoke marijuana. And guess what? 40% of them are testing positive for opioids. Okay? It is in everything.
Yeah. You mentioned, um, the, the mental health and the, um, substance abuse side of this. And you find probably a correlation between homelessness because you said you have to go into the, the tent cities and you're doing this. Um, is, is the service, is, is the, the idea of the service you're providing is to maintain the person or, or rehabilitate the person? I know you always want to, but it, it's gotta be tough. And then the follow-up is, and this will be no surprise to Dr. Green, is we, we spend so much time on the addiction instead of the prevention. And I don't know how much you guys are involved in that. Imagine you're here because, you were asked to come here because there's a need here. Right? And so it wasn't getting much better. Did you talk a little about that?
So one of the things is, is in order for treatments to work, whether that's prevention or whether that's any of the things that you're mentioning, you have to meet the client where they are, not where you expect them to be. And that's a really difficult thing for most people to understand. We see the world a certain way and we think everyone should meet it where we are. And that's not where they are. Um, it isn't about treating mental health first or treating addiction first. Every single individual is different. It's about which one is the primary for that specific person. So there's not a quick fix answer for that. Right? Um, sometimes it is the addiction. Sometimes it is pervasive substance abuse that has caused mental health concerns. Sometimes it's mental health concerns that led to substance abuse because there's a lack of ability to cope with the mental health conditions. We see both. Right? The ideal way to treat that is to have empathy, genuineness, and unconditional positive regard for the person and to assume that there is positive intent here. No one wakes up and decides today, I think I'll become a heroin addict. That's not something that crosses their mind. They wake up in a situation where they can't cope and they can't deal and they can't function, and this is the quickest way out. So it's a lack of coping, it's a lack of community resources. It's all of the things in one. Uh, this is my passion, clearly, and this is all I've ever done. So when we are dealing and we're going into these communities, the first thing that we're doing is building trust. Because the people that are in these communities, they don't trust us. They don't trust anyone. Because the system has failed them since, over and over and over and over again. So we build trust. We stabilize. So if they have a mental health condition, they're more than likely not being compliant with medication. And we offer them long-lasting injectables to get them compliant. Once they're stable there, then we can start the real work. But make no mistake, no amount of effort we put into this is going to work until we address those lower-level concerns like in Maslow's hierarchy. If you are concerned about where you're sleeping and where your next meal is coming from, nothing I tell you about recovery is going to matter.
Right.
So that's what we do. We, we approach this as, with every bit of humanistic approach that I can possibly do. And I train my staff to, to do the exact same thing. It isn't about where I think they should be. It's about where they are and meeting them where they, meeting them right there.
And then we can, and then the real work can begin. And then the real work can begin. If someone's in crisis, it's very hard for them to think about their long-term health outcomes.
How do you measure success?
Uh, every, success is measured differently for different people. Okay? For some people, it's making.
For you, how do you?
How do we measure success? So we have a whole set of, uh, metrics that we follow. Things like, um, on, on a kind of a, um, on a kind of, um, operational level, we look at things like how quickly do we get people in? How long are our wait lines? How many people are we serving? On our outcome level data, we look at things like, um, um, how long has this person been engaged with services? Um, how long are they staying engaged with us? Um, are they attending their sessions regularly? Um, for the individual, a lot of times it's things like, did they get reconnected with family members? Did they become employed? Did they become housed? So those kind of lifelong looking type, you know, those, those life outcomes for them.
Okay.
I measure, I'm going to say that I measure success this way. If you've been addicted to a substance or had a mental health condition for the better part of your life, and you come on Monday and you ask for help, that's success. If you come back on Tuesday and you continue to gain access to help, that's continued success. Every single day that you make a different decision is success.
And so, um, if nobody else has any questions, I thank you. They've already linked up with Dr. Green and the Health Department. They're right in there.
That's right.
And so, uh, and so for the community, um, and there is a, um, you can go on and, um, you can Google them. They got a whole website and the, the, the thing that I like down at the bottom, it says home, community-based services in Fayetteville. And it says surrounding areas, but, uh, right here in Cumberland County. So you can pull that up. It's important for our community to know. Um, and so thank you all so very much. But, uh, I also want to thank, uh, the staff, the, uh, the manager and, and our assistant managers. I know that, um, uh, City County Manager Schemes and, and Haney and, um, Sally Shet have quarterly meetings with Alliance, uh, and they're telling them what our needs are in this community. I applaud Alliance for, uh, hearing us, uh, and bringing them to town because that's the, the conversations we've had quarterly about, um, our needs here in town. So, um, if you talk back to Alliance, you can tell them we thank them, uh, for hearing us and thank you for being here in town. Uh, Dr. Green is just grinning and smiling and glad, glad to have you here.
Y'all are lucky to have Dr. Green, let me tell you that. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Uh, that will take us to the consideration of our agenda items, which is the adoption of the North Central Area Land Use Plan.
Yes, Ross Howard, Director of Planning and Inspections, will, uh, substitute pitch for someone, uh, and present this item, answering any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. Good afternoon. Uh, so the item that I have before you this afternoon, I'm sorry, Mr. Trey Smith couldn't be here. He got, uh, he got sick this morning and so he unfortunately couldn't be able to make it. Let me see if I can get this pulled up for you real quick. Um, so what I have to present to you today is the adoption of the North Central Area Land Use Plan. For those of you that.
Can you do me one favor?
Yes.
And I know you're going to go through it, but just so that everybody can see it, can you pull up that map and it has the, the green on it? So everybody knows what we're talking about. Because if they think about North Central, they may be thinking right up Ramsey Street or wherever. Uh, but this is up by Linden. And so I think it's, I'm not trying to get you out of your, uh, where you are, but I just think people need to know when we say North Central what we're talking about because we've got all these land use plans.
Right. And, thank you. Yeah, absolutely. Um, so, um, and, and just to expand about what you just said, Commissioner, you said a lot of land use plans. We have roughly 11 of them in the county. And so, uh, when I first came on board, one of the goals that I had given for staff as a performance indicator is that, uh, in any given year, I wanted to be able to start or adopt a plan in any given year. And so far, we're hitting that mark and we're actually exceeding that mark. So I'm very proud of the, of the work that staff has done and has been doing for this plan. I'm sorry, we've got away from your map. So, uh, as Commissioner Adams had mentioned, this is the North Central Area of the county. You can see it highlighted here in green. Uh, but just to expand upon it just a little bit further, uh, the plan area is, uh, up by the, um, Harnett County line. It's bordered by the city of Fayetteville, Fort Liberty, Harnett County, and the Cape Fear River. Uh, we, we were looking at approximately 38,000 acres of the county, which are incorporated in this area, with about a 17,000 population of people that are there. Uh, for this particular plan, um, as I mentioned before, we are trying to consolidate all these small plans into plans that make a little bit more sense, even if it's encompassing a bigger area. So for this plan, we combined the North Central Land Use Plan, the North Fayetteville Area Plan, and we actually incorporated some elements of Shaw Heights Land Use Plan, or the plan that was recently done by Community Development. Um, so, uh, I, I would want to point out that the North Central Plan and, and the North Fayetteville Plan, these plans had been updated in some cases in over 20 years. Uh, best practice is that we should be updating these plans on average about every five. So, uh, these are some of our older plans and they were in dire need, uh, for some updates. So just to go over, uh, some of the engagement that happened with this plan, we had a very robust outreach effort as a part of this. Uh, we had, um, we sent out about 4,000 individual postcards to all the property owners in this area back in fall of 2022. Uh, this was just for the community kickoff. We also, um, put out a website, a project website for this plan that had, uh, over 6,000 visits. And, uh, so it, it was a very robust visit and very robust, um, output effort. We had over 100 attendees at the community kickoff meeting. This was, uh, at the Pine Forest Middle School Rec Center. That, that's where we did a lot of our outreach efforts and a lot of our meetings. Uh, we had 70 value surveys completed, 23 stakeholders, stakeholder interviews completed. And we did have a stakeholder group that consisted of some major landowners in the area, uh, Town of Linden folks, some planning board members, and, um, EDC, and some various other community partners who had stakes in what was going on for this area. We had 11 steering committee meetings and we had 74-plus attendees at the draft plan review session. So we had a lot of input on it. Um, when you look at some of the demographics or the existing conditions for this area, um, this area, I think was mentioned by Dr. Green, about our young population. Three-quarters of the people that live in this area are easily of a working age population. So you're looking about, you know, from under the age of 20 up to about 59. Over three-quarters of the, of the population out here are under the age of 59 years old. Um, so between, um, just to summarize some of these graphs here that I wanted to point out, uh, we have a very diverse population in this plan area. And I also wanted to point out that if you look at this chart down here below, I know that this is in the way right here. Uh, but, uh, between 2010 and 2020, with the census that just recently came out, Cumberland County had a 5% growth rate. We estimated this area had close to a 10% growth rate. So this is an area of the county that is growing. We anticipate it's due to the proximity of Fort Liberty, to the, the fact that you have some pretty good utility infrastructure out in the area and you have, um, traffic that's kind of growing down from the RTP area that's coming into the northern part of the county to buy homes.
Does this include, um, up by Elliott Bridge and all that?
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, which is growing leaps and bounds.
Yeah. Also includes the Goodyear Factory area, which is mentioned right here. That's the major employer in this area. So we have a lot of people that are living around there and commuting in and out of that area. Um, so about 50% of the plan area is currently enrolled in the Present Use Value Program. Uh, 5% is enrolled in some sort of VAD. Um, so anyway, yeah, as I stated before, the Goodyear Plan is the largest employer out in this area. Uh, when we had looked at, uh, some of the future land use map and classifications and some goals and objectives, just wanted to point out here. Here's the land use map. I won't go into too much detail on this. I know that for some of you that have been around and, uh, have seen these plans before, this is the map that dictates a lot of the land use decisions and the zoning recommendations that the planning board makes and what staff makes when we do our reviews. These are not zoning districts. These are just general classifications of land that we see and plan for, for this area. Uh, so you can see the breakdown that is below. Um, uh, so when we had looked at sort of how, how this all breaks down based off of stakeholder and community input of what we got, 41% of it is still in, in some sort of rural or agriculture area with 17% open space. But you can see the predominant, uh, types of uses out here are for the most part going to be some form of residential. Um, we do have a flex area that is here and that's new. That was introduced in the Spring Lake Plan, uh, for the area that's up around the Goodyear Plant, just up off Slocum Road, you can see here just north. There's some major landowners in this area. When they were engaged about this, when we look at these large tracts of land that are out here, we can't pinpoint a specific use to go on these tracts. So we would designate a flex area that if somebody were to come in, that, um, it can be a range of either mixed-use, commercial, or, um, some residential uses. And so when that gets designated on this land, that will drive what the future land use designations will happen around Some goals and objectives. We started with a vision statement to be harmonious with the existing agricultural operations, to preserve rural character, uh, to further expand upon economic opportunities in the Shaw Heights, North Fayetteville areas, and then of course preserve a sense of community. That, that was one of the larger things for the folks that, that are in this area, is just preserve that sense of community, uh, out in the Linden area. Um, we have a set of goals and objectives. Um, I won't go to too much in, uh, detail. I'll just paraphrase all of these. Uh, but for the most part, you know, for the rural and agriculture, it was just try to preserve as much as possible, the scenic views and the natural features of this area, uh, to try to preserve as much of the rural character and lifestyle as we possibly can, to predict, uh, designated farmlands and farmland soils. We have some residential goals that were included as a part of this. This was mainly just, uh, the need for having a mix of uses, a mix of density of uses, um, and to basically try to address some of the code enforcement issues that we have with abandoned vehicles, litter, and clutter that you have out in those areas. Community, uh, facilities and services. This is largely just related around trying to be able to work with existing schools and parks and recreation to expand upon those types of facilities out, down those areas. We did incorporate some representatives of Carver's Creek State Park, which falls in this area as well, too. They have some trail networks that go through their state park. So of course, we wanted to incorporate any plans that they have. We've incorporated that now into the county's plans for when we have development around their infrastructure. And of course, we took this to the Town of Linden. Uh, so the, so, uh, Linden is a part of this. They have their own jurisdiction, but within that jurisdiction, we did work with them on some goals and objectives and some future land use categories that you see down here, uh, for them. Shaw Heights, um, we simply couldn't go into this plan area and not include Shaw Heights. Uh, if you looked at a map of Shaw Heights, it kind of sat on its own outside of this area, but it was still close enough to be able to include in this area. We didn't reinvent the wheel with a lot of plan stuff that was related to this. Community Development recently went in the last few years and had a plan that was done for Shaw Heights. So we just incorporated and just referenced that plan as a part of this land use plan.
And, and I guess. And I guess, because Commissioner Keefe and I always talk about, everybody believes that Shaw Heights is just on the left side of Merkson Road, but it actually, you can see from this map, comes across all the way over, and that's how it gets in this North Central Plan. Most people just think it's the spot off of Merkson Road to the left, but it's all of that area that is included in Shaw Heights.
Yes, sir.
It's between Berndt and Merkson.
No, it goes from Merkson all the way over to Ramsey Street. It gets up near Pines and all of that. People just think it's down near the Merkson Road site. Commissioner Keefe?
If I can piggyback on Commissioner Adams, Shaw Heights has been in a lot of discussions for a lot of different, does anybody ever look at the wisdom of maybe the flex area sort of, of that? Because we, we don't know what Shaw Heights will look like if it become annexed or we get water and sewer, or does it become a more of a commercial, is to have an educational facility on it? There are so many things out there. The wisdom you had of the flex area is, can that be looked at also with Shaw Heights?
Absolutely, we can look at that, Commissioner.
I don't know, Mr. Chairman, if you can see where I'm going here is, we, you know, if we get water and sewer out of Shaw Heights, it could change the whole, the needs and the desires of landowners and whoever it is, it could become more commercial, more government institutional. And for commissioners in the future, you know, commissioners in the future, you don't want to have to rezone every single small piece at any time somebody wants to extend something to build a bigger property, whether it be community housing, whether it be a school, whether it be a government, whether it be a neighborhood, or a strip shopping center. So what is, what is the, what is the best way for future commissioners in rezoning to look at the Shaw Heights area as far as being able to be zoning friendly to developers who may come in?
It would probably be a work session that I'll have maybe with the planning board or some of the staff to try to figure out from a regulatory, so this is just policy, so the regulatory stuff, we'd have to figure out what the regulations would need to look like in order to make that flexibility a reality on a day-to-day basis. Now, I know that when we did this, we had a representative on the stakeholder group from the Shaw Heights community, so I don't think it maybe was even brought up from the, for being a flex area. But I can tell you that, you know, this largely, as I said, kind of piggybacks on what community development has done, so I imagine if community development or us at some point, if they get ahead of us and come out there and do their own plan or update their plans out there, we can certainly piggyback on those efforts as a part of what they do, or if it's something that we can do, we can certainly do that as well.
Well, policy sort of drives it, you know?
Yes, sir.
Once we get the policy, so we drive it in. I'm not so sure community development might not know what we're looking at doing in some other areas, whether it be, again, in...
Well, Interim Director's here, so I think he knows.
I saw him over there, Ty.
Yeah, he got it.
So I think community development understands now where, but you see my point, Ty, right? You know, we don't want to miss an opportunity because we've got a small piece of zoning that we have to go through in the delay project.
And we actually own some property up there in that area, the county does.
Yep. Commissioner Booth?
Isn't, when the stats first came out, it was such a high population of not owner live-in, it was rental with absent owner. Has that changed? Have the owners now that the word Shaw Heights keeps coming up in city council, county commissioner meetings, have the owners come back and done anything themselves as far as refurbishing their property, getting ready for sale even, or approaching the county or the city about doing stuff?
I don't believe that's what the data, our data had indicated, Commissioner.
Because, because you're not going to get tenants real motivated into doing anything that they're paying rent for. So unless we reach out to the owners, and if you do a real quick little just landwide map and just take a little cursor and put it on there, you'll see it's owned by Captain Retired John Smith, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. And so it's like investment property that he may have lived in while he was at Fort Bragg or something, and then bought it, and now he's renting it, but he's not, he's not keeping back in touch with it. So I don't know how we're going to get a united effort when it's so fragmented on ownership. So I don't know, I don't know how you go about doing that, but you're up in my land wide account, take exactly where it is.
You want to move on? Okay. So just getting towards the wrap-up, there are some recommendations and some resources that were identified as a part of the plan. Just like any plan, there's some things that kind of set the stage or some action steps that we would probably want to be able to take. So part of that was looking at some, amending some ordinances for some commercial development in the area, trying to address community appearance, maybe heightening some of our development standards, as you can see here, again, don't want to have to read in the essence of time. Economic Development was very, very vocal about this area, we had them involved in this, so they were very instrumental in giving us their two cents, so to speak, about some of the recommendations they wanted for economic development, public infrastructure, again, as I mentioned, Town of Linden, Shaw Heights as well, too. So that's it for my presentation. Again, I tried to keep it as short as I can for a plan that's so long. If you have any, oh, I will say that this plan has gone to the Town of Linden's Town Board, they adopted it, and we went to the planning board, and the planning board supports the plan by a unanimous vote. So at this particular point, all staff is asking is that, is to have a public hearing on it at the 16th meeting, that it be included on the agenda for that.
I'll take a motion, for the 16th, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
That is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
And I guess this is on our website?
Yes.
All right, for the public to be able to view, so that they had any comments, okay. Thank you.
This is not for voting, please.
No, it's just for setting a public hearing on the 16th.
Okay.
That will take us to the amendments to the local emergency planning committee bylaws.
Yes, June, emergency services director will present these changes to the bylaws and answer any questions you may have.
This was included in your packet that you got?
I got to get it.
So I made it a little bit longer.
Did you see the changes?
They turned it up some.
Ash, you all, then you saw the proposed changes in your bylaws?
Get after me.
Well, there's actually two different documents, neither of them are redlined. They're not redlining ours.
Yeah, I apologize, I realize that coming up to the meeting, for some reason, they're not showing the red lines on the version, so Danny provided those for us up on the screen. If you, yeah, we'll see how long you want to, during the process, I can give you a brief overview.
That's what you best do.
That, the changes that we made, that our team made within the bylaws really goes along with a new document that North Carolina Emergency Management provided for the North Carolina Hazard Materials Local Emergency Planning Committee Authorization Guide. These changes to the bylaws ensures that we meet the 12 goals that's included within this Authorization Guide. They review that annually, authorize Cumberland County's LEPC to continue to move, which the most important part, it makes us eligible for grant funding, and those are the grant dollars that we use annually to conduct hazardous materials exercises as well as exercises within our emergency operations plan. These changes, just to highlight real quick, on page 1, removed a couple of older terminology and added develop, maintain, and update Title II's there, Emergency Response Plan in conjunction with the Cumberland County Office of Emergency Management, developing the plans and getting them out to the public. This, and the track change, includes support competency 8 of the authorization. That's just an example of how these, these changes are tracked and were made. If you have any questions particularly, I can go through each one, but I know you wanted an overview.
Does anybody have any questions? All right, no questions, if I can get a motion to approve the amendment of the LEPC bylaws and place it on the consent agenda for September the 16th.
So moved.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Oh?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Gene.
All right, that would take us to the resolution for funding assistance for the proposed future Cedar Creek Water and Sewer District. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Amanda Beta, General Manager of Natural Resources will present this item along with item D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, and L.
I know that we're not going to do it that way, so we're going to go this way. We're going to do, go ahead and do C, I'm going to change this up on these other ones, but go ahead.
Well, I was just saying that the shoe's going to be up here and we don't have all of these.
Okay, so for resolution for the proposed future Cedar Creek Water and Sewer District, we have been working to try to obtain funding, particularly in the West Cedar Creek area. We have applied for brick funds, we have been through a couple of rounds with, with the Division of Water Infrastructure. We're going to approach the Division of Water Infrastructure again for the fall round.
So we need a resolution by the local government to help you with that funding?
Yes, sir.
If I can get a motion to approve the resolution for the local government to be attached to that to help her with that funding?
So moved.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
We also have the funding for the Graves Creek Water and Sewer.
Yes, so for Graves Creek Water and Sewer, although we do have obtained funding for Phase 1, we are putting together an application for Phase 2.
And we need the resolution for Phase 2?
Yes, sir.
So if I can get a motion to approve the resolution and both of those, send those to the consent agenda.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Unanimous.
That is unanimous. A resolution for funding assistance for the Overheals Water and Sewer.
Yes, so when you look at our sewer cells and how much revenue we collect on our sewer cells, we need to improve that unaccounted-for flow, and so we're considering that for the Overheals area.
And the applications due September the 30th, we need the resolution, so if we can have a motion to approve the resolution, place it on the September 16th consent agenda.
So moved.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
This one's a little bit longer, this is a request for qualifications for the engineering services.
Yes, this is request for engineering services for a transfer station. We're, we're at a position where we're looking at other expansion options on the landfill. Permitting for end construction for expansion options will take more than six years, which is what we have left at the landfill. We were unsuccessful in proceeding with a design-build approach for the transfer station. Now we're looking at a design-bid-build approach where we would work with a consultant through design of a transfer station.
And that would be Smith Garner Incorporated?
That would be Smith Garner Incorporated, they're the only firm to submit...
As the best qualified firm for the engineering services?
Yes, sir.
All right, for the Ann Street Transfer Station. If I can get a motion to accept the selection of Smith Garner Incorporated and grant permission to enter negotiation for the detailed scope, work, and services, and prepare a contract for the, for approval at the future Board of Commissioners meeting?
Yes, my motion.
I got a motion, I got a second, all those in favor?
I have discussion.
Oh, we got discussion, I'm sorry.
Question, are we somehow able to avoid this if we get some expenses, the south end expansion? Can you elaborate on that, please, sir?
Sure.
Want to tell me all?
So, so we've looked at several expansion options, and we've talked to the board about several expansion options. The concern is that as we look to the south and west, which would be on property owned by the county, there's still a lot of hydrogeological work to do, and that will come up in some of these other discussions, and permitting. And then once that permitting's done, we still have to proceed with construction. And we only have six years left. We are starting to, we're, you've all approved a contract with GFL to begin diversion of some of the waste stream from the Ann Street landfill to buy some more time. But at this juncture, not, not having a clear crystal ball, all I have is my dirty cracked crystal ball, I would say moving forward with a transfer station ensures that we have adequate capacity for our solid waste needs. We also are looking at, running out of space, sorry.
Can't imagine what would come in?
There are some other options that recently come up in which the transfer station may not have to be constructed.
Okay, that's kind of my...
When I, when I say not constructed, we may, we'll still need a transfer station, we just may not have to construct one.
Okay, in the event that we have to construct one, and, and if we do get additional capacity and therefore time, can it be repurposed for something else? Or, really, and how much, how much are we thinking we're going to have to spend for this?
For the transfer station?
The transfer station, yeah.
We have to bring that back to you.
Okay, we don't know that we, and do we know, do we think we can repurpose it, though, if we're, if we end up not needing it for that purpose?
Yes.
Okay.
You good?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right. You heard the motion, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
All right, so we just approved the RFP with, with Smith Garner, so G is the service agreement for the solid waste landfill gas for 99,000, the service for the solid waste landfill gas routine for 60,000, you've got all of these, the service agreement for solid waste borrow area driven to 30,000, the service agreement with Smith Garner for the storm board improvement for 75,000, the service agreement for the solid waste annual water quality for 96,000, and the service agreement for solid waste storm water compliance for 25,000. If I can get a motion to approve those and move those to the consent agenda.
So moved.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
That is unanimous, so thank you so very much. Thank you, Mr. Manager. That will take us to the design-bid contract for the government services parking deck. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Jermaine Walker, Director of Engineering and Construction will present this item and answering questions you may have about the parking deck.
They just want the work to be finished, that's all. You tell them that, they're good.
Well, if it's approved, it goes to consent agenda, sir. We're looking at substantial completion March 23rd, 2026, and final completion April 2nd, 2026.
How long? Two years, two years. 2026, all 25 and then, a year and a, a year and a little bit.
Yeah, most parking decks nowadays are prefabbed, so most of the major pieces come loaded on a truck or a train and then assemble them site.
Finally, something used for a train in downtown Philly.
Yeah, this is for the, for the parking deck, and this is approval of the base contract with Samet for Phase 1 pre-construction services for the parking deck. And that would be an amount of $1,998,627,000. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
It's been moved in second, it's already been pre-audited and had been for legal sufficiency. It's been moved in second, and to be moved to the consent agenda, all of those in favor?
Unanimous.
That is unanimous, thank you.
Those are unanimous.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you have some questions? I'm sorry, okay. All those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioner James, Commissioner Council, Chairman Adams, Vice Colonel Stewart, Commissioner Booth, and Commissioner Pete, voting in opposition, Commissioner Faircliff.
Talk about that, Mark.
Not on the parking.
Yeah, you, you lost your parking space.
First of all, when you find out what this building, what it's going to cost, we're not going to need the parking deck.
We feel.
That's just my opinion.
That'll take us to the leasing policy.
Mr. Chairman, your permission, I'll just set at the table because I think most of the discussion for these next two items will be with the board members instead of me. Is that okay?
That's quite all right.
Has it presumed the documents we've been receiving the last several months on this?
I don't think.
The leasing policy was presented in the last month's agenda session, and the board asked me to bring back a spreadsheet with the properties that we are leasing as a tenant instead of a lessor. And that's what's new, that's what's been added to this. And you'll spreadsheet where it says facility and, the first spreadsheet, it says facility and lease agreements. The two in yellow on that first page, Millview Investments and Northwest Valley Office Plaza are the only two offices or buildings that the county leases as a tenant. The one is in, at 2622 Hope Mills Road, it's an office that is used for the WIC office over in Hope Mills area. The second one is Northwest Valley Office Plaza, it's at 2504 Rayford Road, and it's this DSS Family Visitation Center, that's what it's used for. Those are the only two buildings that we lease. Everything else on this list are leases of land for convenience centers, and there's not, it's not really, you should really take that into consideration because each one of those is a very unique situation and the rents are all over the board with the leases that we're paying, and some we have been leasing for decades. But the two, I think what you were particularly interested in was the two office spaces that we have, and those are, one, we didn't have the square footage of the WIC office, the other one was 1753 square feet.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I saw it.
And the board had directed me to come up with a leasing policy. I gave you the information at the last agenda session on all the things that we, of county property that we lease as a lessor, and you'd asked for this additional information, and I had included in both packages as a proposed, just for discussion, a proposed policy, and I'm just seeking some direction from the board on what you're looking for.
Mr. Chairman, I read the attorney's, and I like where he referenced market value of current North Carolina state.
Right.
So we have a benchmark to go by, right?
Yes.
That's what you'll be using. Other than that, that was my major concern. I thought that we were just way too subjective on who was renting to give them a good price or no price or whatever. So I like the standards that were put in. So I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Is there any discussion?
To answer my question, is your motion to approve the proposed policy?
Well, the way that you had it written, yes.
Okay, yes, okay. I just want to make sure.
I like to do those.
It gave standards.
Yes.
So, and it does, but as we go to 3.1A, you say we've got to find out that it's, that that's not needed for the county's governmental purposes.
You always have to do that when you're disposing a property anyway.
Well, we're not disposing, we're just leasing.
Well, you're taking it out of our use, yeah. I mean, you're taking away from governmental use.
Even if it's a floor or a, even if, so we'd have to go in and say for that floor, we don't need that floor.
Yeah, we're just talking about just the specific area you're leasing, yes. It just, if it was one office in the building, it would be just that office, yes, sir.
All right. Anybody else have any other questions?
I didn't even think about it that way, Mr. Chairman, but you know, I understand the concern.
You see what I'm going with? Because here's the problem, I mean, here's the problem. With the space limitations that we got in this county, we'd almost put out everybody that we leasing to. I mean, I can't go up here on where, and I'm not trying to, and put people out when I'm sitting here having problems just finding space, and we're going to say, hey, that's just, we don't need that. And I understand it's a statutory that we got to do it by state. I don't know if we could put in there at that subsequent time or something like that because we may need it later on, as opposed to being definite that we just decide that we don't need this because we may need it in the future, and so if we terminate the lease, we, you know.
I can narrow that down by saying the board commissioner must find that the leased premises is not needed for the county's governmental purposes during the term of the proposed lease, that's already in there.
During that proposed lease, that, that.
That's already in there, yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Booth?
Yeah, that's what, and I think I spoke briefly with him about this, that in case we grow, let's say we're already, we have out of a four-floor building, we're taking the first two, and we declare that the second, third, and fourth floor right now aren't needed for this term of this lease, and we realize when they want to renew, we go, you know, no, we're on, we're about to add, you know, 18 employees, so we can only give you the fourth floor. So I think in putting the term is not needed for governmental use during the term of the current proposed lease. So I think you hit it.
Well, then that means you can't, like, some of these leases automatically renew. So, I mean, that can go on for imperp, I mean, it just can.
We don't have anything that's an automatic renewal, and there's always a provision to give notice to terminate before an automatic renewal. We do not have anything that goes on in perpetuity.
So, Mr. Chairman, with your addition, with your verbiage, would you be my motion, okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. Andrew, did you get that?
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions? If not, there's a motion on the floor. All of those in favor?
Unanimous.
And that will be moved on as a consent item on the next agenda.
Yeah.
That takes us to the amendment for the resolution regarding continued participation in the county health insurance by retirees.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a matter that's been discussed some time, and the, what I've given you is the, the first document in the attachments, is the current resolution that's in place by the board. That incorporates the changes that were made in 2014, and that is the only change that was, those are the only changes that have been incorporated into the resolution. As I pointed out, in the, what follows that is a one-page for Section 8. That is, that is a redline version of a new Section 8 that's being requested to be as amendments to this resolution. And I also have added to that myself, the, if you notice in the memo to the board, we took action, the board took action in 2016, not by any resolution, but it has been interpreted since then as the board eliminating retirement, the retirement health insurance for employees hired after that date. And that's what we think has been set up since June 30, 2016. It is not clear from the action taken by the board that that's, that the board actually did that, so I want some clarity on what the board's intent was with that action in 2016 and incorporate that in the resolution. There were also resolutions adopted in 2020 and in 2023 that were adopted separately as not part of this resolution, and I would like to incorporate those into this one resolution so that there's a single source of a resolution to look at for all of this.
Commissioner Booth?
Yeah, first I'd like to thank Rick for being, I might have burned up his telephone a few times there, but they were all, they were all issues that have come up over about the last year, year and a half, and for him to get them all kind of in like a common theme, I'm very appreciative of that. And I would, can we do this on one motion for all of them since they're all presented at the same meeting?
Um.
I would just move that we approve all the amendments by the resolutions as presented by council and be placed on the consent agenda.
That's in line with whatever our health insurance policy is. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved as second. Are you any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Unanimous.
And Mr. Chairman, if, with your permission, I'd like to just put this on the first meeting in.
In September.
September, I mean.
In October.
In October recalls. I do have to do a little bit more work on this with the things I'm adding.
Okay, in October.
October, yes, sir. First meeting in October, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That will, there are no other items for business items. You've got your monthly reports that came, the financial report, the health insurance update, the county competitive grants update, and the project updates. Jermaine probably ran out of room. Oh, he's still over there, there, there.
Tried to.
So that would take us to the closed session. I'll take a motion to go in the closed session for attorney-client privilege pursuant to NCGS 143318183, and for real estate matter, NCGS 143318.
So moved.
What the attorney gives the last on the real estate.
Well, the number five is six or five.
Okay, six or five. It's been moved as second. All those in favor?
No, I was going to get.
All right, we're going to closed session. It's about, it's 2:20, so 2:25. Give us about, it's 2:20, so 2:25.
If I can take a motion to come out of closed session.
So moved.
It's been moved to second if it come out of closed session. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
There's a second. It's been moved to second. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Can I get those pictures right there?